All the meeting of January, of the city council of January 27th, 2016 to order. And let us have council member Stransky lead us in.
Please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We see it.
It's not like he's done that before.
Now, let's find out who's here.
Okay. It's Congressman Stransky.
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Mathew?
Here.
Mayor Orne?
I am here. Okay, um, public communications. Council welcomes participation in this meetings. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. To expedite matters and avoid repetition, whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that a spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the opposed agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. No action shall be taken. Is there anyone here tonight who wishes to address the council?
Thank you.
Any city council members in the public?
I'm here with a different hat on. I'm here as a representative of the Mendocino County Food Policy Council. And what I wanted to present to you was information from the California Food Policy Council for your review. It's about, it's their legislative report on bills that they've been tracking regarding food systems improvements throughout the state. And it's, it's something that's very interesting. So I've got a report of all legislators in the Assembly and the Senate and how they voted on food policy issues, about water, poverty and food access, and climate change, climate change in agriculture. So fascinating information if you're interested in those areas. I certainly am. So I'll give it to, these are some reports. I'll give it to the clerk.
Before you sit down, I know you're going to find this hard to believe, but there might be some people in this community who don't know who you are. Would you care to identify yourself?
Okay. My name, my name is Jim Merrill. And speaking as a representative of Mendocino County Food Policy Council, which is a gathering of lots of folks who are interested in improving food security, access to better, better and more nutritious foods, and having that become more local and available to people. And their efforts to make that happen in Mendocino County are varied. And this is a report that outlines some of those levels at the state and what the California Food Policy Council is doing. So it gives you the reports of all the legislators and how they're voting on those issues. So it was an interesting thing to deliver.
Okay.
While you're there, you want to announce about the Sip Some Soup?
I certainly can.
Switch hats.
Well, okay. Sip Some Soup is doing their annual fundraiser here on February 6th, 5:30 to 7:00, I recall. And that's their, their major fundraiser to gain support for their operations which are needing to be supported with this fundraiser. Yeah, thank you. And one other item I'd like to add is on March 13th, which is a Sunday, it'll be a town hall meeting over here. And the subject for that town hall meeting is mental health services in Mendocino County. What do we have? What do we need? How do we get there? And we are going to have a panel presentation, we're not sure who yet, but to speak to all those issues. And then obviously there will be public questions and comments to follow. So that'll be here 4:00 to 6:00 PM, Sunday, March 13th.
13th.
Okay. So anything else I can say?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else in the public? Bill?
Thank you. Bill Hart still. I just want, because someone got ahold of me after my comment about cannabis at the last meeting, I just wanted to clarify kind of what I was saying. I was saying that I'm not really in favor of outdoor grows in town. I'm not anti-cannabis or anti-marijuana. I think it's inevitable that it's going to be legalized. And I was just in Oregon where there are stores in the towns and I was, my hotel was by one. And it's like going to a Sees Candy Store, I guess. But in fact, it looked like a Sees Candy Store. I didn't go in, but I did walk past. And I think that, I don't think that we can, I don't want to unnecessarily criminalize it. I think it should be handled, kind of like alcohol is handled. I don't see any point in us trying to do legislation where we keep it out of our town. That would be silly in Mendocino County anyway, in Willets especially. So I just wanted to clarify that, that I'm, I'm not against it and I just don't want it growing on our little tiny lots so that the smell is blowing over into everybody's place. Thank you.
You may have hit on advertising ploy, Sees Candy with a C. Just saying.
Royalty.
Anybody else from the public has? Yes, ma'am. Step up and introduce yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, this is, that's by the ways for the cameras, people at home. We don't have an amplifier, so you have to speak up.
My name's Tracy. I've been living in Mendocino for 15 years. And I am here on also a cannabis issue. I am here asking, requesting permission to open a smoke-free dispensary in downtown Willets. And let me tell you how it came to this. Myself and four other people started the Mendocino Wildlife Association. And in that association, one of our main concerns is habitat conservation. With the legalization of cannabis, my biggest fear is the loss of habitat. So this dispensary would be exclusively small farms only. It would be smoke-free, it would be clean, and it would promote a healthy environment in a healthy Mendocino. It also would bring people off the 101, as I see a huge reason why, yeah, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but we're world-renowned. We're like champagne for sparkling wine. So Mendocino's Finest would be the name of it. And it would be to support the small farmer in Mendocino County and support healthy gardening and support healthy medicine. The other day I got sick. And I don't do pharmaceuticals. They, for me, it's just not my thing. I would love to walk into a clean green store and get my CBD medicine or whatever I need in a safe way. It would be 21 and over. You'd walk in, you'd see education, you'd see what habitat conservation means, you'd get, you'd know what a CBD is. So that's my idea. And I'm asking actually specifically to be represented by the council to be on the agenda for next month. Will someone take me on, please?
That sounds like a request.
I'm requesting.
Isn't that like a land use question that should come through the, our plan?
Well, well, actually, I got a phone call from Tracy and got back to her, let her know what our current policy is. The current policy is no dispensaries in the city limits of Willets. So right now, she couldn't come.
Well, that's true.
Do you know what I mean? My hesitation in recommending we, I'd be happy to get back to you again. I have, I brought this up to Jim at our last meeting. And this is, happens to be a time where a lot of the rules are being
Reviewed.
Reviewed, exactly. So we're not part of that March 1st deadline that has now been extended. But, and I don't know if you want to address this. It does seem like it's a reasonable time to address it.
Bruce Burton said he had an interest in, in forming an ad hoc committee to take a look at our current marijuana ordinances and to see whether there's some recommendations that should be brought back to the city council on revisions or?
Actually, I thought we actually did form an ad hoc committee. We did this a couple of months ago.
Well, at our last meeting.
No, not the last meeting. This is several months ago, I believe. Because I sort of volunteer.
I wasn't aware that an ad hoc committee had been formed a couple of months ago.
There was probably no note made of it because I haven't seen any mention of it, but I kind of recall we did.
But anyway, it's, we're probably getting to that point where we need to talk about it.
But basically, we can't promise that it will be on the next agenda. But the, yeah, I believe the mayor did say that he wanted to review those rules right now.
Is there a way that you could have a community member on the ad hoc committee?
I'm not sure, but I, maybe you could get your contact information to the city clerk?
Okay.
And then we could keep you updated on when that committee is meeting or, or what the, does that sound reasonable?
Mm-hmm. So no commitment for next month's agenda, but you will be in contact, kind of thing?
Yes.
I'll just touch it. We'll be in touch.
But make sure you get your contact, the best way to contact you to the, to the clerk.
Okay. We will carry on. Um, public matters. We have a proclamation designating Paint the Town Red Week. And I shall read it. And I'm wearing my, my badge, and I'm not sure which side is up.
It's a dress.
It's a which?
It's a dress. So the little arms are the top.
It's a dress.
It's a dress. It's a red dress.
Oh, those are arms?
Yes.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, it's right there. Yeah.
Or it's a guy. You could think of it as a scarf, but it's a dress.
I thought it was a drop of blood. Anyway. A proclamation of the Willet City Council recognizing February 1st to 6th, 2016, as Paint the Town Red Week in the city of Willets. Whereas heart disease is the number one killer in women, claiming more lives than all forms of cancer combined, the American Heart Association has formed a Go Red for Women campaign and declared the month of February as Heart Month. And whereas February 1st to 6th, 2016, is declared the week for communities to paint the town red in honor of bringing awareness to heart disease that strikes people we love. And whereas the city of Willets businesses, along with Barra of Mendocino and the Willets Chamber of Commerce slash Local First Committee, will decorate and support this great cause. And whereas it behooves all citizens of the city of Willets to promote, foster, participate in, and enjoy this great event. Now therefore, I, Ron Ornestein, Vice Mayor of the city of Willets, do hereby proclaim February 1st through February 6th, 2016, to be Paint the Town Red Week. And urge all citizens of the city of Willets to visit local participating businesses to learn about heart disease signs and prevention strategies, share stories, and support a great cause, along with supporting local commerce. And I applaud the city of Willets for joining in as a community to celebrate Women's Heart Month 2016. In witness whereof, I have here unto, set my hand, and caused the seal of the city of Willets to be affixed this 27th day of January, 2016. And I believe we have Martha Barra who will receive this.
Thank you, Mr. Ornestein.
Thank you. I was trying to say something today.
Absolutely. Why would you have all of these wonderful women here? I said, I'm going to make the most of this. It is the number one killer of women. You do not ever want to see one of these. This is what you get, and I think it does say, I'm not advertising for a set, but you get this when you have heart surgery. Hold it. And that makes you much more comfortable. This is not mine. It was my husband's, though. So in culminating all of this Go Red for Women, we are joining with the Adventist Heart Institute on February the 6th at the winery to do testing for my body mass index next year. Last year was not very good. Let's just say. They will do blood sugar, they'll do high blood pressure, your blood pressure testing. So we would encourage you to be aware of symptoms, of healthy lifestyles, be aware, take care of yourself. You need to live for your family. We want to thank the city of Willets and particularly Chamber of Commerce and all the participants that have put effort into making all of our communities more aware of the problems with heart disease. And I want to introduce to you Stacy Gibbons, who is our executive director from American Heart Association for the North Bay, Go Red for Women. Yeah? I just want to thank you guys, to everybody who's gathered and gotten this message out. It is so important. One in three women are still dying of heart disease. So if you take the three of them here, one of us is going to go down with heart disease. We need to change this number, and we need to work hard at this. It's 80% preventable if we get going on the right diet. Know your numbers. Awesome. Go to Barra next Saturday and get all your numbers. I mean, how great to know your numbers because then you can do something about it. So I just want to thank you all for doing this. And thank you for wearing your little red dresses and really spread the word. You know, women, we do not take care of ourselves the way we should, right? We're always taking care of everybody else. We're worried about everything. We really need to take care of ourselves and ourselves first, so we take care of everybody else. What time will that be? Excuse me? At the Barra event?
From 11 to 5.
And it's going to be great because the Penns Hospital will be there, too.
And it is free in the public.
And it's just so good to know your numbers and carry those numbers with you. And make sure that all of you guys, all the women in this room, make sure you make a wellness appointment this year because when was the last time you really took care of yourself and went in for a wellness appointment? You don't go. You're going to get sick. But you don't go to prevent it.
Like at H2 right there.
Anyway, I just want to thank you all. This is an awesome thing that you've done. I love that you guys have come together and have helped everybody this way. So thank you.
You're welcome.
But I make sure you're coming to the council outside of our promotion for Go Red for Women. And that is, your mayor presented very nicely at the, it's called ABCA, and that's Agricultural and Construction Businesses Coalition last week. And you would think that he was either Realtor or he had Lynn Kennely's job with the Chamber of Commerce. He really gave a good report on Willets. So you should be pleased that he represented you well.
We certainly are. Thank you. And every once in a while, he lets me play mayor. Next item is presentation on developments at the Willet Center for the Arts and council direction regarding terms of lease agreement for management of facility and transference of operating funds. Guess you want to take that?
And actually, I am going to recuse myself just because I have, may have a potential business relationship with the art center. Don't currently now, but erring on the side of caution.
That's all right. Okay. And we're not going to take action anyway.
Correct.
So Adrienne, I guess you want to lead off on this?
Yes, thank you very much. Well, this is a two-part item. First, we're going to have a presentation from the new board of directors for the Willet Center for Arts. And then after that presentation, we're going to have some discussion regarding a lease agreement that we need to formulate and bring back to the council for action. But I think I'd like to invite the board up first to make their presentation and tell us all about what's been going on.
Hello, my name is June Ruffman, and it's almost a year to the day that Nancy Reed, Dale Dingman, and I came before you asking you to allow us to continue operating the Willet Center for the Arts while we found a way to make the center self-sustaining. It's been a year of experiments and excitement, and we'd like to update you on where we are right now. On October 30th, the center became a California corporation. In November, we held our first board meeting and elected officers and passed bylaws. December 3rd, we received our confirmation letter from the IRS granting us 501(c)(3) status, as well as our registry with the California Attorney General as a charitable trust. This month, we received our approval from the United States Postal Service for a bulk mailing permit for nonprofits. The board's vision is to foster engagement, exploration, and excellence in art in all of its forms. We see the WCA as a partner in cultivating a vibrant community, art, community, arts environment, ensuring access for all. If I may, I would like to introduce the board. That is Anne McGlenty, if you guys could stand up. Lynn Whiting Robertson. Emmy Good. Nancy Reed. Jenny Jurgensen. Bwara Willens, Vice President. Carol Alshire, Treasurer. And Sandy Strong, Secretary. And I'm the president, so.
So it's appropriate that this is Women's Heart Week.
Yeah, it's all women.
Take care of yourselves.
We didn't, we didn't start out intending it, but it's been pretty dynamic. As a board, we have a very ambitious agenda for 2016. We've established an active Facebook page that Rosie Wagonette is managing for us. Morgan Rex continues to manage our website. Our monthly artist shows continue to draw crowds. We are in the process of hiring a part-time manager to run the center. By hiring a manager, along with a new docent program, we hope to keep the center open more days and longer hours. We want to triple or better the art classes held at the center in 2016 and have plans to create secure lockers for instructors who teach there regularly. We want to encourage more than just the visual arts. We are actively looking for other groups to bring their art and energy to our center. Outreach to the schools is also a high priority for us. And on top of all of that, we will be painting, landscaping, and installing new signage later this year. Funding will continue to be a priority for the board as we continue to explore innovative and new avenues for funding. We are financially healthy, but we will need greater income to see the many programs we envision come to life. We would not be where we are today without the countless volunteer hours and support from the community this center has enjoyed through the years. Certainly, the council's willingness to trust us a year ago, year ago was instrumental. And we can't thank Adrian Moore and Kathy Moorhead enough for all their support through the years. But it's the countless volunteers and past commissioners that have kept this center alive that we owe a real debt to. This center has always been a community project built by a community of love. There are two volunteers that we'd like to single out and say a little special thank you to tonight. Thank you for their countless hours, love for the center, and their boundless energy. It's because of people like them we are here tonight and will continue, continue to be successful in the future. Unfortunately, one of them can't be here tonight, and that's Dale Dingman. We owe him a big debt of gratitude for all the hours and all the energy he put in to the art center. The other person is here tonight, and that's Nancy Reed. Nancy has been there, working and giving everything she could to the art center. And we just wanted to take this night to thank her for everything she's done for us.
Well, thank you. I didn't expect that. It's always nice to have surprises. Better put these on. Ah, much better. Okay, well, I'm Nancy Reed. Most of you know me. I'm an artist, and about four years ago, I was really concerned about what was happening with our Willet Center for the Arts and got involved. And that was timely, along with Dale and with June and other members that just wanted to pull things together. And so here we are, a year later. Our theme for this year is this artsy light of mine, I'm going to let it shine. And hope we don't, whoever wrote that doesn't mind. We've had a wonderful year. Well, first of all, I want to thank the city council members, especially Kathy Moorhead, who I run to and everybody runs to with things to ask her for, and she's always been there for us. Adrian Moore, same thing. She's scheduled meetings for us when we needed to have questions answered. And thank you so much, both of you, for being there for us. And, and you're still going to be there for us. You both have said good. We're not, we're not leaving, you know? We're not cutting the cord. Okay. So this has been an exciting and productive year for the Willet Center of the Arts. We applied and received for nonprofit status. We selected a board of directors who can work really well together and generate fabulous ideas in a creative, yet fun way. WCA is moving forward with our goal to outreach into the community with our art, our communication, and our desire to share and teach all forms of creative expression. We're reaching out to our schools, to our youth, to our new artists, and to our seasoned artists. This year, we had Draw to You Drop, which was very successful, thanks to Elizabeth Raby. That was a fundraiser. Our annual holiday craft fair was very successful. I think the economy is better this year. Artists and patrons were very happy. Also, our raffle ticket sales were up. And so all those things helped with our treasury, but helped with, with the community, feeling a part of it, happy to buy their gifts from local artists. Our membership drive last year and this year so far have been successful and drawn in more people, as well as our faithful base. We've gotten some new people, which is great. The volunteer list has grown and includes young and vibrant, eager artists, which is the future of WCA and art in Willets. We have planned a dynamic and varied calendar for 2016, with much help from Fernanda Permenter. She's not here tonight. A very energetic woman, artist, student organizer in her own right. There are so many artists in this area who want to show and share their work. We want to present new artists, as well as some of the established ones, and our calendar reflects that. Importantly, we are being businesslike, and we are now charging $100 for each show, which most galleries and art centers do. And so we kind of transitioned from $50 last year to $100 this year. And the artists seem willing to do that and take, I'm not going to say more of an interest or more seriously, but there's a different thing when you pay for something. WCA has prepared a detailed packet outlining the timeline and preparation of shows. This is to facilitate the guest artist's responsibilities and to have a successful exhibit, which is their goal and our goal. Some of the members are putting a list of musicians and caterers together to help with the social needs of an opening. We've applied for a license to sell alcohol at our openings and events. Many people enjoy a glass of wine while they're enjoying our beautiful art. We plan to paint the upstairs Great Room with volunteers' help and to publicize its availability to the community more. The Chamber of Commerce is planning their winter mixer at WCA on February 25th in the Great Room, and we are very excited to be hosting this. WCA wants to display more art on the walls of the classroom and the Great Room. We also plan to establish a docent list, asking volunteers and seniors from the senior center to provide their time. Our goal is to have the center open for more hours. That's something that many people have asked for. WCA plans to offer the seniors a gift membership for their time, in exchange for their time. I've already spoken to somebody there, and they're interested. Many ideas have been discussed. A co-op, ways to utilize the classroom and Great Room wall space more, a gift shop to sell prints and cards. Many of our community cannot afford original art, but would be able to purchase those. As you can see, we are live and anxious to take our place as a more vital resource for the city of Willets this year. WCA also plans to apply for many grants that are out there. Plans to paint the exterior of our building with a shared cost to the city are underway. The building needed repair before the painting could be done, otherwise we had hoped to have it done by now. We want to make the art center more visible with banner signs that you can see from 101, as well as the new exterior. We want to thank the city for removing that tree, which was creating havoc with our plumbing and blocking the view of the building. So now when the building gets painted and there'll be new sign, there'll be banners, we hope everybody will want to come by. We are open to suggestions from the council and from the public as to how they can help us to achieve our goals. And last but not least, we want to thank the city of Willets for making the building available to us and supporting our mission statement and endeavors. Thank you again, and we are looking forward to another productive year, 2016. Nancy Reed, Volunteer Coordinator.
Thank you, June and Nancy, so much. I just cannot thank, oh, go ahead.
We have Emmy Good.
Oh, yes.
Hi, I'm Emmy Good, and Let It Shine is the name of our camp.
Hi, I'm Emmy Good, and "Let It Shine" is the name of our campaign that we're launching through Indiegogo in order to raise enough money to paint and repair and do the signage on the building. Our goal is $10,000, and I think I actually do have a date. I just, believe it or not, I mean, I spent time with Kathy yesterday. I went down to the chamber, spent time with Lynn today, and I thought I had these dates all picked out, and then I went by Emmondall because we're hoping that Emmondall will use... I had really thought, I wanted that music, "This Little Light of Mine," I want to make it, or I want to let it shine. And then I found out that Emmondall does a fabulous version of that. So I went tonight to invite them, and I thought that the date we were going to want to launch, that I had cleared with Lynn and so on, was April 3rd. And then I heard that Emmondall was going to be performing with another group on April 3rd, and I'm really embarrassed to say this in front of my fellow board members who are also at Emmondall, because when they stood up and they announced it, I kind of let out a, you know, "No, no, you can't do this." And they all felt really bad. The date's supposed to be April the 10th. So I just have to plead old age or something, because April 10th is the date we want to launch, and I'm going to have to get back to the Emmondall people and tell them it really is okay. And I have to make sure Lynn knows it's okay and Kathy. April 10th, Sunday afternoon. The idea being that we want to launch our campaign, and Dan Roberts and Mary Corta and all of the poets of Willets are going to do a little presentation at the Willet Center for the Arts upstairs in the Great Room on a Sunday afternoon, sort of a marathon, and we'll have Emmondall Choir also, you know, performing, hopefully, to launch our campaign. Midway through the campaign, and the campaign will probably go about 40 days, it gets a little much if it goes beyond that, but midway through, we'd like to do a Sunday afternoon, and we have that date also, that will be a sort of family-oriented arts in the upstairs, where we'll have a collage center perhaps, and we'll have some printmaking or stamping, different kinds of activities that all ages can do. And that's our midway-through campaign. And then, at the end of our campaign, we hope to have another kind of big event, which will, at this point, remain unknown. There's some thoughts that are there. Anyway, we're very excited about it, and we hope that you'll use your networks to get the word out also. But April 10th is the launch date, and we'll be getting a lot of publicity out before then. Any questions?
What time?
I think it's going to, you know, begin like at 1:00 in the afternoon, and we'll go till 4:00, something like that.
You know, 40 days is very biblical. That was the days of the flood. And if you really want to get imaginative, you can kind of relate that to the resurrection of the Art Center.
Of the Art Center. Hallelujah!
All right, thank you. You guys have done an amazing job. It's been a long journey with the last leg of it that was really, started about two years ago, when the Arts Commission was struggling to stay active and wasn't able to hold regular meetings, and so business wasn't getting done. And there were many times that I think we all were quite concerned that, about the future for the Art Center. And we had some efforts along the way. Bill Barxdale was tremendous in the time that he spent with the Art Center. And then you ladies picked up that torch and carried it to where we are today, and I cannot thank you enough for all you have done. It's just been amazing. So we are excited about the next steps, and one of the key steps is getting a lease agreement in place between your new board and the city. We've been working on this sort of behind the scenes for a while. I want to say thank you to Kathy for all of her time that she's spent working on different things, and Jim Lance, who's already been crafting this agreement, that you'll get, I think, probably tomorrow to take a first look at. And we're going to get some council direction tonight, hopefully, and we hope to have something back before the council, maybe as soon as the next meeting, the first meeting in February. So focusing in on the lease agreement, we basically looked at the Frontier Days lease agreement as our basis. We own the rodeo grounds, the city owns the rodeo grounds, and we lease it to the Frontier Days Association, which is a 501(c)(3) organization. And so we have been reviewing that agreement, but we need to talk about the key terms of this agreement, what would work for these purposes. And so one of the key components would be the term of the lease, the length of the term. For example, Frontier Days, I believe they have a 99-year...
I think it's 50 years. But they've been operating for so long, it seemed appropriate to give a long-term... I would think, I don't know what the Arts Group has in mind, but I was thinking a term of five years and then renewing, or possibly 10 years. It's a brand-new organization, and we probably don't want to go any longer than that, I wouldn't think. But that's one thing that we'd like some direction from you on, is what do you think a reasonable initial base term should be? And other basic concepts that I had thought that we would try to keep similar to the Frontier Days lease is that basically, the tenant gets the premises for a dollar a year. It's virtually no rent. And in exchange for that nominal rent, they're going to pay the expenses of the building. It's like a triple-debt lease. They pay the insurance, and they have to show proof of insurance each year, so that there's liability coverage and there's fire insurance, and that they're responsible for the maintenance of the building. And I understand that initially, there will be some shared repairs to the building and painting of the building on a shared-cost basis that was mentioned. But by and large, during the term of the lease, I would think you would expect that the tenant would pay the expenses for the operation of the building and for utilities. And another thing to think about is a key component of the lease, I think, needs to be that there is a continuous use of the building for cultural arts purposes. And if, after a year, hypothetically, the group lost some steam, and there were months and months that went by without the kind of use that was anticipated now, well, that's not what you had in mind when you entered into the lease. So we would want to, I would think that the city council would want a lease that, in exchange for free rent, that there be very regular use of the building, greater than what has been used historically, or at least equal, if not greater, and that that would be a vital term of the lease. And if that wasn't happening, if they weren't using the building as anticipated for cultural arts purposes, or they weren't paying their insurance or providing proof of insurance coverage, that that would be a breach of the lease. And it would be something the lease would address, of the right to terminate the lease if any of those things happened. And so, that's similar with the Frontier Days lease. We shared the Frontier Days lease with the group and got some comments back, and I've now gone and pared it way down. There's many, many provisions in the Frontier Days lease that just don't apply, and we whittled it way down. And so I provided that to Adrian a day or two ago. I think tomorrow she'll provide to the group, we'll hear their comments back. But it'd be good to know if the council shares the kind of philosophy that I've been suggesting as far as the lease terms, and maybe get some feedback from the Arts Group so we can go forward in some direction.
I do want to make one clarification. The city would still own the building, and because of that, we would continue to carry liability insurance on it, as we do on the rodeo grounds and all of our properties.
So does that mean that the Art Center wouldn't have to have independent insurance? Or they're also...
They, that's one thing that was under review with Remif, actually. Remif is our insurance carrier, and so we're having them review and give us their feedback on this. But we would maintain a, you know, base level of liability insurance, and if there's something additional that would be required, we would look to the, this new board to take on that expenditure.
Okay, so using the Frontier Days as a model, it means that no horses. You know, before, you know, we'll get into the discussion, of course, but, you know, I just want to say that I've been kind of intimately involved with the Art Center almost from the beginning. When my wife and I first moved to Willets in 1997, the Art Center was just about to the place where it's getting, where the renovations had been completed and they were done, and my wife became one of the founding board members, I guess you would call it. And she served on the board for X number of years, and I had to live with it. But it was, but it's an exciting thing. I mean, the whole idea, and I'm sure everybody in this room is aware of the history of the Art Center, and maybe there are people at home who aren't aware of it, and I think it's suitable to discuss it, because, you know, it was an abandoned building that the city gave to this group of artists to rebuild. And it took about maybe seven or eight years, I think, of manual labor and fundraising, and they turned this thing into an amazing piece of real estate. It was really something to see. And you had mentioned Dale Dingman, who was one of the, man, he was a bulldog. But, you know, you have what you have right now, and it lent a very important dimension to this town, you know, bringing a place for the artists. And we do have a very vital art community in this town, and I think it's great that you folks have stepped up and, you know, made it viable again and vital. So I applaud you for that. Anybody have any comments that we were talking about, the lease agreements, and Larry?
I, first of all, want to thank all of you ladies for all of the work that you've done, and I'm glad that it's got this far. I really appreciate it. If any help that I can do, I would certainly be able to help you or ask to be helped to help you. The one thing that I might say is that I would recommend that we go with a five-year lease and then look at it in three years to see how it's going and how it's going to be going, maybe with a report from the group or from the president or whatever, to come back to the council and show us your new paint job on the building and all of the repairs that you've done. And one suggestion that I might make to you is that on Main Street, which is 101, which will soon become the Willet Street, you need some advertisement, because people do not know what is down the line. And I don't know how many times that people have come into our store and, in fact, it was interesting, I kind of side dressed from it, and wanted a repair done, and I said, "It's going to take me two hours," and they said, "Oh," you know. And I said, "Have you gone down to the museum and seen what's down there, and that'll spare some of your time?" And they didn't come back for three hours, and they thanked me very much for that. And they would have gone on through town. They were people that were passing through, and you need that signage. And I think a really nice place to put it would be at the parking lot there, just on the other side of Main Street Music. And these are things that you need to think about, and because we're all going to be calling to get people off of the highway, and then, once they're off the highway, what they're going to do here and now. And that helps the businesses, and it also helps you people. And that's my suggestion, the five-year with the three-year, looking at it. Thank you.
Right, I agree. A five-year lease sounds like the right way to go, and I actually would love to have them come back even annually, certainly, maybe not three years, just to, you know, see how things are progressing, just a little report, like, you know, progress. And I agree with most of what Jim was suggesting. I do like the idea that the city is providing a basic level of insurance for the building, because insurance is expensive. But then, obviously, if you're going to have special events with, you know, with mine being served or whatever, you would need to get a level of insurance for special events that would be beyond just the building and liability, the normal, and that would hopefully be part of your finances to be able to do that, and of course, the utilities and regular maintenance. So, and I love the idea of the city making that available to you for a dollar a year. I think it's a wonderful asset to the city and to the whole community, and our artists and art appreciators. And so I think we're...
We might request, you know, that they prepay the full $5 at the beginning. Just get that out of the way. Another issue that I wanted to bring up is the potential subletting of the space. If you envision that there will be a time where a portion of the premises would be, you'd allow some other group to use it, I would think from the city council's perspective, we would like that use to be in harmony with the Art Center's use. And it would also should be a similar culturally, cultural arts-related use, similar to the use that we are contemplating with this group, as opposed to something totally unrelated to the arts.
It's a pretty fine line, because, yeah, I'm not sure how I feel about that. I think that if there were renters who...
Now, if they decided to do something that was food-related, that might not fit your cultural definition of the arts, but it might be something...
Ron, could you have her come up to the microphone, please?
Why don't you come up there so the people at home can hear you?
Emmy Good, and my question was in regard to if it were some kind of a thing like a gift shop, perhaps, or that I can understand would be culturally related to the arts, but if they decided to have some kind of an in-house food concession type of thing, that might not fit your definition.
Well, it's something to talk about, and I don't know what the council's desire is on that. If it's, you're talking about food as a concession to your own operations, I think...
I don't know. I mean, it's just conceivable, you know, that, you know, that, I know, it would happen in advance, yes, but whether there would be an in-house thing, but I'm just wondering if your lease is going to preclude that, basically.
Well, I would think that, and, you know, I haven't spoken about, my opinion about the lease terms that Jim brought up, but I agree that the cultural art aspect is key. I mean, that's underlying. And I would think that in the case of some, you know, food vendor or food operation...
We're just looking at things that can help support...
And that would be a case-by-case basis. I think that would be appropriate to bring it to the council and have a discussion, and to see where it really fits in. I mean, to have, just sitting here talking about the thing, and we're not discussing it, we're just kind of throwing ideas out, you know, having a pizza parlor, for example, because somebody wants to open up a pizza parlor, may or may not be an appropriate use of that space. So, but I've been to, and I'm sure you all have, been to museums where they do have a restaurant, a very nice upscale kind of a thing. So, you know, I don't know that it would be out of the question, but I think that when it comes up, you know, the lease would be written, I believe, to allow for discussion on certain things like that. That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, I also don't want to tie the hands of the Art Center board too tightly to a narrow definition, because you want to be able to support yourself financially. So if somebody comes to you and says, "I want to rent upstairs for some special event," and it's not ostensibly art, music, whatever, poetry, et cetera, but it's a good use of the space, I mean, it's a lovely space. I don't think we need to have that come to the city council, personally. I would like to have some leeway for the Art Center board to make those decisions for one-time use sort of things. If it's an ongoing use, like a restaurant or something that's going to be ongoing, that's sort of in the gray area, then I think maybe that should come. that's sort of in the gray area, then I think maybe that should come as a interpretation, whether that's okay for, for ongoing uses. But I, I really, I want to make sure that you have the leeway to raise money to support your operation.
But, you know, this is a new romance we have going here. And we're just starting to dance together. And, and I think it's, it's not inappropriate for the city to keep a close eye, at least in, in the beginning, maybe the first couple of years or so. Because, you know, you, you're trying to feel your way through as well. And the city does have a lot of money tied up in that building and a huge commitment. And our commitment as well is to the city as a whole, you know, the, the image that we project. So I, I think we do have skin in the game. And, and I'm not sure that I would be willing to step back. You know, I'm not saying I don't trust you at all, you know, obviously, but let, let's dance a little bit together and see how, how we get along and, and see if we're all on the same page. And I think, I can foresee over time, especially if we have a renewable lease, that, you know, the lease terms might be extended, you know, beyond five years to 10 years as we see it going along. Some of the terms might, you know, renegotiated and loosened up a little bit. You know, all these things can happen, but I think, I think it would be a little premature to just give you the keys to the city and say, you know, knock yourself out.
Just a couple of things. One, in the, I think, almost five and a half years that I've been with the Art Center as a commissioner and now on the board, I don't think we have missed one monthly show of community artists. And certainly, our application and our granting of our 501(c)(3) is dependent on our continuing to work with the community and bring arts into the community and support arts in, in the community. So I just, I wanted to put that out there. I don't think anybody doubts that this board and this community would ever not see that center used as, as an art center. I do, I do want to say that certainly the rentals are a big piece of the money that we are going to be using to fund the center. And we had assumed that we would be taking over for Kathy in scheduling the rentals and managing the rentals. So for, that would, for us, would have to be part of any lease because that is a big piece of how we fund the center.
So, I'm not sure I understand what you were just referring to.
Well, we rent the upstairs, we rent the classroom. We have, the Willet Photography Club meets there monthly. We rent, we pay a year's rent in advance to use the classroom. There was a baby shower, an engagement party, you know, there's a lot of activity in the great room and in the classroom. And those are funds that we are counting on to support the center.
It, it gets rented out, just like the community center gets rented out. And I don't think anybody envisions that that would not continue. I think, really what we're trying to...
Just wanted to get that out there.
I think what we're trying to put in place in this lease agreement that would come forward is some basic parameters and, and, I mean, that's what we're working on. And nothing's been decided. You, you have the opportunity for input in that as much as the council does at this point. And then, will, when we have something that seems mutually agreeable, we'll bring it back to the council for approval.
You know, there is the thing, you know, the city council has a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of the city. And as much as we love what you're doing and, and we really support you and look forward to your huge success, we still have a responsibility to make sure it works and, before giving it up. And, you know, unfortunately, in the past several years, we've had a couple of arrangements that didn't work out as well as we wanted them to. So we don't want to go down, we don't want to go down that road again. So I, I feel that we should be more cautious than not. We can hold hands, but, you know, we don't, we still, you know, we still need to make sure, assure ourselves and the citizens of this community that it is going in the right direction. We have no doubt that you have the ability and the drive and the desire to make it work. That, that's not the issue at all. I mean, that's not even on the table. But, you know, we have a responsibility to make sure that we just don't give out carte blanches, cartes blanches, willy-nilly, you know. So I, I, I've always felt that working slowly towards a goal and, and making sure we're, we're building a firm foundation is the best way to go. Because personally, I would like to see you guys carry this on for the next 50 or so years.
Bring in, bring in some new board members as well.
So, anybody else have any comments about what we were, the possible lease terms? I mean, I, maybe I didn't make my thing clear. I, I agree that the five-year lease is good to start with. And then, as we renew it, it may be appropriate at that time to go to seven or 10 or 15 or whatever, you know, how that works out. I, I certainly agree that the purpose of the building is cultural art. And like pornography, that's in the eye of the beholder. I'm sorry. But, you know, that, that is open to definition to some degree, but not in other degrees. I mean, obviously, there are things that definitely don't fall into the art category. And, but that is what the building was, was built for and the purpose of the building for at least the last 20 years. And I think that needs to be the primary purpose. As far as the expenses and everything, I think that's appropriate. We're not trying to break you or anything. But on the other hand, I think it's important, what they say, that something is worth what you pay for it. And not that you need the extra incentive, but, you know, if, I'm not a big believer in a lot of freebies either. And I'm pretty confident that if you get into a jam, the city's not going to leave you swinging in the wind. And I don't know how, what form that would take. We would have to discuss it. But, you know, I, I think what I'm saying is I believe that the city is, is in full-time partnership with you. And we want you to succeed, but you need to take the lead. Is that succinct enough?
Could I make a comment? I agree with what you've said, and we're not going anywhere. We're just going to keep going. We've got dynamic people here that are going to make this thing go. And I don't know, I shouldn't speak for everyone, but I love coming here once a year and telling you what's going on. So if you want to hear from us once a year, no problem.
I like six months, actually.
Because, yeah. So, just wanted to say that, that, you know, we're here and this is a commitment we've all made and we're getting younger people in and, yes. Unless something really crazy happens, we're not going anywhere.
And, and I know that. I appreciate that. And quite frankly, if we didn't believe that was the case, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion tonight. So, you know, we're, we're, we're together, I think. Anything else? Okay, do you have a clear and present director?
Yeah, I've already prepared a draft and we'll, we're going to make one change. It said it's 10 years. We're going to change it to five years. And Adrian or Kathy will distribute that tomorrow. And we look forward to your comments back and we'll work with you back and forth until we're both happy.
Okay, well, thank you, Board of Directors. I'm sorry? Public comment, I'm sorry. I thought we were having it as we went along. Anybody from the public, including directors, have anything that they would like to add or conclude? Okay, thank you very much. Good luck. Okay, and now... As we regroup and reshuffle everybody, we have Item C, which is an update from Solid Waste Willets regarding the implementation of new services. Mr. Ward, I believe you're the man.
Guess they're not adding up any food waste. Good evening, Jerry Ward, Solid Waste Willets, and to council members. As you know, November 1st, we implemented a new, we call it a mixed organic waste program. It's a program that we actually started a year earlier in the county and using compostable bags. But we, we've implemented a little different program where they can put the raw food waste or mixed organics in the cart. But we do encourage the public to maybe buy compostable bags and put it in there because it could create some smell issues during the summer months or it could cake in the bottom of the cart if it's, if it's pretty liquid-y type material. So we did contact Mariposa Market about stocking compostable bags. They're willing to do so, and from a residential standpoint, I think that would be wise. For the, for the restaurants that we've made contact with, we're really definitely encouraging that. Mainly because they typically use a garbage can in the kitchen, maybe a couple of garbage cans in the kitchens. And rather than having our bulky cart inside the kitchen, they'll scrape their plates and whatnot into the garbage can. They use bags now and it goes into the trash. But we're actually asking them to use a compostable bag. They can tie that bag up when that trash can is full, then walk it out to the cart and put it in the cart for pickup. We've contacted over 22 restaurants and let them know where they could buy the bags. But each restaurant, we had to have one-on-one conversations with them because where to locate the carts, where are they going to put the trash cans, where are they going to put them out for collection, those kinds of things. So it was a one-on-one situation. Todd Cannon, our, one of our drought managers, made contact with all of them. To be honest, we haven't had a lot of good comments back. A lot of people have already made adjustments with their food waste. Some have utilized local farmers or they, they have their own places. They take it at home and compost it. But of course, we're, we're still pushing the restaurants to encourage them to, to use the services and we do follow up with, with them all. I believe we only have three or four restaurants now that have, that have signed on to it. We are using carts for the restaurants. We'd rather not use dumpsters. For there, again, it's, it's the ease of trying to use one truck to pick up the residential and the commercial. And then have to send out a, a separate commercial truck just to pick up a couple of dumpsters because they'll have to come back and dump those couple of accounts right on the floor. That doesn't mean, doesn't make sense. So far, the restaurants we ran into, I think two, three carts would be sufficient for them, for the bigger accounts. Like I said, we've contacted 18, or 22. We started on November 6th and went from November 20th, December 4th, December 12th, December 18th. We had a couple of, we've been doing it on Fridays because that's the collection day and that's when Todd's available to go, take the time to go talk to the restaurants. We had a reprieve for the Christmas and New Year's holiday because they landed on a Friday and we went back at it in this month. Again, it's just going to be a continuous conversation with these restaurants to encourage them to use it. But right now, I'm not too happy to see the, the lack of participation. But that doesn't mean we'll give up. The residential, we did send out a person to sort of check the carts from the residential standpoint to make sure there was no contaminants in there, that there's non-mixed organic material so that Coopri Compos won't call me up and tell me to bring the whole load back to us. So, so far, everyone's doing a pretty good job. Unfortunately, Mads, I know you're really interested in this, there just hasn't been a large volume of it. I did talk to Phil Chow from the Environmental Health Department, who inspects not only our facilities, they inspect CNS Waste Solutions in Ayukaya. They have a food waste program as well. They inspect Coopri Compos and they inspect Pudding Creek in Fort Bragg, who also has, has had a food waste program. But he is saying, seeing about a 3% mixed organic. Now, that may be true. I've never really believed some of the solid waste experts in our county that said 30% is the waste stream. I've never really believed that, but it probably is a little more than 3%. What really people need to get used to is the napkins and the paper plates and the cups. That's all recyclable. It's not just food waste. It's actually materials like that. You have picnics and whatnot.
Keep the boxes.
The box, the food boxes, correct. Those kinds of things can be, should be put in there, but we're just not seeing that yet. As you know, the carts were now, we bought extra carts, green carts for the program. We put new stickers on the top of the carts describing the program. And then, the end of the week before, November 1st, a flyer went out to all our customers describing the program. Under our new contract with the city, we have to give out a newsletter each year. And typically, we put it out in the county in January. It'll, it'll look something like this, but we're really expanding it. Instead of having four pages, it's going to be eight pages. And it won't just describe our food waste programs or the organics. It's going to describe our blue bag policies or which, which is a recycling program. It's going to describe medical waste, prescription drugs, batteries and household, household deals. I mean, a whole gamut of all, of everything, so I could pass that out each year for, for the, for the customers. Each year, we pass out a calendar. You might get one at home. It shows you the pickup schedules of different things. Well, that's going to be incorporated in the newsletter as well, not just for the city of Willets, but for Brook Trails, for our areas in the area around Willets, Anderson, Dolly, South Coast. So we're trying to cut down on bulk mailing and have one newsletter. So it's going to be eight pages. It'll be something we'll put out each year. Again, we'll, hopefully, we'll describe the mixed organic program again and start pushing it. Hopefully, you know, things like tonight, people will be watching TV and understand that they, they can do that. So I think that's about it. I'd like to, I know it doesn't say anything about mixed organics. It says new services. I would like to add a couple of things that has been a sort of a problem for us. And that is people are putting their household batteries in the recycling cart. And we do allow them to bring it down to the transfer station. You can drop off cell phones, household batteries, vehicle batteries, all that for free. But unfortunately, they're putting them in the recycling cart. And as we process the recyclables, it drops through with our crushed glass. And it ends up in the crushed glass, goes down to San Leandro for processing. And the Environmental Health Department's getting on now, not just from us, but from all these MRF operators, to get the darned batteries out of the recycling of glass. So we're doing a better job trying to pick them out. But if we can encourage people not to put the batteries in there, they're very difficult to pull, to pull out and under a, a system of magnets and things like that even. The other one that people always call us on is what to do with a cap on a bottle. You know, do you leave it on the cap? Do you throw it, keep it off? Well, we prefer to keep it on because that cap is also like a battery. It goes through the processing and falls down into the glass as well. So we encourage people just to keep the cap on.
So it crushes fine, even if it's...
It crushes fine. Why don't you take all the liquid out? It, it's something that people think that it's a different type of plastic, but it all goes. This is a pet plastic. It's, it's allowed to have the cap on it for that particular type of plastic.
That's a good point because I, I've never known myself. I just take off all the capsules of everything and there's never thinking about it. That's a good point.
So that's something that, again, the strategic materials where we take all the glass are really coming down. There's a lot more recycling programs now and single-stream recycling and they're getting, I mean, in some cases, they're only getting 50% glass in their loads. The rest of it is just cigarette butts and batteries and you can name it. Paper clips and they're really, really coming down hard on a lot of the operators to try to clean up. to clean up, clean up the act a little bit. So, I, I thought I'd bring that up. Holly, I know you have a question.
Well, more of a comment. I just wanna say that as a resident, not as a council person, but as a resident with a sycamore, I am loving the fact that the green waste gets picked up every week because I actually, so far, I fill it up every time. I am doing the food waste in there, but I mean, we don't, there's not that much for two people. Um, I did receive, um, a comment from the public saying that they were excited about the program and they were starting to use it. For some reason, they are only sort of now becoming aware of it. I don't know if they're just going through their mail or what. Um, they had said that they really don't use that big green, you know, that they sort of wish that there was a smaller option if it's being, you know, hauling it out every, every week. But, I mean, I think it's, it's gonna work how it's, how it's gonna work. But also, even they who were starting to use the program for their food scraps weren't aware of the fact that it was getting picked up every Friday. And so, I think as that word gets around and I'm certainly telling lots of people about it, that people will, you know, not everyone remembers or, you know, they don't necessarily read their mail.
Well, of course, when we get new signups too, our, our customer service staff is telling people too what they can do with their things, with their products.
Yeah, but I've been very happy with it, just personally.
I think it's just gonna take time, Mads. I know you were really like to see this thing take off the first day, but it's just gonna take a little time. Uh, and I think the restaurants are the key. They're the ones that could really save quite a bit of money if they really put their head to it and decide, they can take that two-yard dumpster down to a one-yard dumpster or a yard and a half dumpster or down to a one-yard dumpster, down to a ninety-five gallon garbage cart, which saves them considerably amount of money.
So, maybe if we know any restaurant people, we could mention it to them, like, you know how Solid Waste's gonna talk to you about this?
We're following up with all, we've only had a few people that say, no way, Jose, but a lot of them just say, well, I'm, I'll think it over or I'm gonna talk to the boss or whatever. The other thing that I'm really concerned with is making sure the management know, as we all know, kitchen staff come and go pretty, quite often. Um, so we wanna make sure that their training programs are consistent. So, like Almech's Restaurant, I, I go in there a lot and get a straw. They always give you a straw with your drink. You put it on your plate when you're done. Well, I don't want them scraping that straw in with the food waste because it is plastic and I don't think Martin at Colcree could appreciate it. But, uh, those kind of things need to be constantly brought up through management at the restaurants and with new employees and whatnot. So, I'm hoping that eventually it'll all be second nature to all of us and even the restaurant owners.
Uh, so I just saw that this was in last week's Willets Weekly. I don't know if it also went out in the Willets News or not, but, uh, that's a nice, um, extra piece of publicity about what goes where. Um, and that, I'm not sure if you put that out or if it was.
It looks like our.
Solid Waste. Anyway, and then, um, just for extra measure, I, I have a home that I read out in Oakland and they have been doing the organic waste and all that for quite a while. And they have this one, which is, um, really eye-catching also on how to, you know, don't put your bananas peel into the garbage. And, uh, and they are also complaining that they are not reaching the goal that they think they could in trying to get more and more people to, to get with the program. And as far as restaurants are concerned, every time I go out to eat now, I'm noticing that they don't have a separate place to put the paper plates or the paper napkins. Um, and that's sort of consistently around every, almost restaurant, every restaurant I've been going to. So, I mention it to them and I think it's not, you know, it, it's not insurmountable, but I think it is gonna take some persistence and maybe customers need to keep reminding them, gee, you know, you could be not putting this all in garbage. This could all go in, in an organic waste stream. I don't know if they have a green cart to put them in, but, um, I do think that the potential is there to keep expanding and expanding. I think, I appreciate that you're gonna be persistent about it because that's what's gonna.
No, I think it's gonna take that.
Yeah.
And continual education.
So, I'd like to, if there is possible, to get some numbers as we progress, you know, a year from now.
Well, every Friday, I go out there and look at the load and it doesn't show a lot, so unfortunately, but I'm hoping over time there will.
So, there's, the residential customers, um, that's, uh, one sort of way to educate people to use it, but, but the whole restaurant thing, it really does take individual.
People at home have, they could have a garbage disposal they use for their food waste. They have, we sold for years, a thousand compost bins for people to take home. You know, they may be still doing it in their backyard. It's hard to really say.
Yeah.
And then people are, are, they don't like change a lot of times. They get into a routine, so we'll keep pushing it and we'll, uh, we'll keep back, come back and give you updates on that.
Jerry, you were talking, you mentioned batteries before and, you know, I've been saving my batteries and light bulbs to take to the hazardous waste pickup.
Yeah, that's what I usually do too.
And usually wind up missing it.
Yeah.
But did you mention that you, they can be dropped off at?
Yeah, we take, we take household batteries, we take, uh, car batteries, we gotta take cell phones. I have a bin for shrink wrapped plastics. I got, uh, for clothes, used clothes.
But not light bulbs?
No, we, what we do, technically, people wanna drop them off, but Mike Sweeney gets a little upset with me because he loses the revenue. But I do pull them out of the, when we load check for the materials that go into our bins or into the transfer station, I can pull that out and set that aside for Mike to come pick it up for free, but.
Is that better for hazardous, if you can think of it, take it to hazmat?
He gets a little bit of the revenue off of it, so. Uh, personally, I like to think that all our transfer stations could be, whenever we're open, people could drop off those houses' materials and then Mike just does a mouth run. But that hasn't happened yet.
All right, so, I mean, more convenient, you know, not have to wait for twice a year.
Right, you can do it anytime.
And like I say, I usually miss the date.
Yeah, you see, you think, oh.
So, if I can get rid of my batteries and my light bulbs, can I just bring them over to you and I know.
Well, I can take the batteries. I don't know, are you talking about fluorescent lights?
Yeah, fluorescents, yeah.
That's considered a hazardous waste and he likes that revenue. But the batteries, I just get rid of them when they come and get the household, the vehicle batteries, we give them the regular batteries as well.
Okay, so the household batteries, I could drop them in that, that bin where you have all the electronics?
There's a bin there by our, by our oil, in that, in that area in there.
The electronic stuff that goes in, is that correct?
Yeah, it's in that, in that corner.
Yeah.
Or there's a drum.
Oh, okay, okay.
Uh, last, if there's no other questions, uh, I was hoping that people from the Willets Arts Center were here, but people can, we've been encouraging it, that they wanna donate their recyclables, I mean, the money that they get for recyclables, they could put the Willets Arts Center on our list. We do the Food Bank, we do the Senior Citizen Center, those kind of things. A lot of people, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of people that need the revenue, the money, the cash. But there's other people that just wanna recycle and say, I'll just give the money to a, a charity or whatever. And we have a list.
But that adds, it really does add up, yeah.
It adds up and we pay out, like, probably thirty, forty thousand a year in cash.
Are you talking about the stuff that we put in the blue can?
No, I'm talking about the stuff you bring, your aluminum cans and your plastic containers, your CRV products.
Okay.
Instead of getting your three dollars and thirty cents, it's, maybe you'll buy a cup of coffee with it, donate it to the Willets Arts Center or something.
If you pay for gas.
But, uh, it does add up. We do that at all our sites in, in the county and, uh, it can add up. And it doesn't matter to us. We've gotta pay it out in cash or write the, the Arts Center a check, you know, every quarter. But we're not gonna send them a check for three dollars. We wait until it at least gets over ten dollars before we write a check.
That's great. We'll, we'll make sure they know about that.
I'll try to get back to you, uh, maybe in six months and we'll see how the program's going again.
Thank you very much, Jerry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay, so now we'll go down to the consent calendar and we have two items, the.
I'll move, we approve the consent calendar?
Second, Ed.
Okay, we have, I'm just looking at this thing and I'm not looking at the consent calendar itself, but we have two, two meetings on January 13th. One is a special meeting and one was not a special meeting. Is that, is that?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Don't you remember that, Remco? We started.
Yeah, yeah, right, 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 right. Okay, you're right, you're right, okay.
That pizza.
That we recycle. Okay, now I remember. Okay, uh, so we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Um, do we need a roll call or can we just say?
All those in favor?
Yeah, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Wasn't that so fast? We just saved ten minutes. Okay, then we have the informational reports, the warrants and the Caltrans, uh, update. Do we have, you have something to say here?
I just wanted to let you know that I did request, um, that they start including the updates on the mitigation project and they will start that next month.
Oh, good.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and will they report if there are any erosion control problems? Because last year there was.
They actually did, uh, they, well, actually, no. There was something on there about, um, the erosion control measures being complete?
Being installed, maintained, where is that?
Monetary maintenance will take place. So, yeah, I mean, I think that they.
I, I just think we should have on record at least that if there are any erosion control problems, um, at all, that they report those. Because they, they're letting us know that they have, you know, they've done their best management, whatever, what is it? B, B, BMPs, Best Management Practices. So, they, they tell us, we've done our BMPs and we've, you know, done reseating and all that. But last year, there were some, lots of erosion problems and they got cited for, um, erosion going into the streams. So, I just wanna know that we will get reports if that happens. There's, there's a lot of rain and a lot of potential for things to fail.
Okay, so, right to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with the decisions of the city council may have the right to review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted Section 1094.6 of the Code of Civil Procedure, which generally limits to ninety days, the time within which the decisions of the city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. Item seven, commissions, agencies and authorities. We have nothing for that. Item eight, city manager reports.
Just a couple of things and Larry, are you gonna, you're gonna cover CTC on, enter IMCOG?
Uh, I hadn't planned on it.
Okay.
I just got the letter today.
All right. Well, let me start with that then. I think most of you are aware that the California Transportation Commission, uh, made a decision last week to cut funding of projects statewide by seven hundred and fifty million dollars. And, um, they've given a directive to all the RTAs, the Regional Transportation Agencies, to make recommendations and submit those back to the CTC by February 26th. Um, we don't really know much more than that at this point. There is an IMCOG meeting Monday, um, Monday morning that I will be attending. Larry is our rep, of course, and Holly, I think you were gonna.
Because that is one-thirty in, in the afternoon.
Oh, well, that goes with.
Yeah, morning, yeah. But I, I was also thinking about just sitting in the audience for that topic.
Uh, so we, we have contacted, um, Phil Dow of IMCOG as well as, um, some contacts at, at Caltrans just to get some more information on this and there really isn't much to be had at this point. Um, there seems to be some degree of confidence that Willets projects will not be cut, but, um, I think that we need to lobby to ensure that that is the case. So, um, what was distributed out to you is, uh, some email that Rod got last week from, um, from IMCOG, from Nefeli, about the decision that had taken place the day before and what it means to us. And then, um, the second page are the fifteen, sixteen STIP allocation priorities. And, um, as I understand it, they're gonna be looking at projects and, and if they, seeing what criteria on this that they meet. And if all the boxes are checked off, then you have a higher, um, degree of, you know, likelihood that you won't be impacted. And I believe all of our projects, you know, do meet all of that criteria. And then, the last, um, is the press release from CTC last year, uh, last week that was issued on Friday.
Pretty dire language.
It was, it was alarming. It was definitely alarming, so.
It's not surprising, given the price of gasoline.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll find out more about that at IMCOG's meeting on Monday and report back on that.
So, can I just comment about that? And that is, um, in addition to wanting to make sure that, that Caltrans is on the hook for completing the child projects, which they have committed to us that they would do, uh, which includes mitigation, Sherwood Road, bringing Main Street up to a good standard of whatever, of repair. Um, those are, of course, they, they better be on the hook for that. Uh, but I also think that this means that the IMCOG allocation of funds last year, um, and again, this December, to increase our IMCOG share was based on giving them future STIP funds, if I'm correct. We don't, we didn't have.
You mean like local matching dollars?
Yeah. That, that the, um, the commitment of IMCOG funds that have already been approved by IMCOG were based on receiving STIP money in the future.
Yeah, it's gonna be a problem.
And, uh, if we don't receive any more STIP funds, that means we can't even do that. So, those are, uh, that's another level of concern.
Absolutely.
Being able to have anything left in our transportation fund.
I do wonder, and I guess this'll come from, from IMCOG maybe, if, if there is a, a project list. So, this is the, this is the type of projects that shouldn't be affected, but I wonder if we couldn't get a list of the, you know, kind of already approved projects that were on, that had originally planned to have been funded. Um, yeah, to sort of countywide, to see what the other priorities are.
Well, I think that's what they're intending to do on, on Monday. I, I looked at their, they didn't have their agenda packet online, just the agenda itself and so, you know, there wasn't, when I last checked it, um, I think this morning. Um, so anyway, we'll, we'll certainly have more information after Monday's meeting.
We'll be backing you up, Larry.
Um, so, sort of in keeping on that same topic, the Main Street project, um, let's see, um, we, planning is continuing for the Charette, um, the week of April 18th. Um, and in the meanwhile, um, we did, we had a delay in issuing the media release about the consultant selection because we were still reviewing the proposals on the downtown streets and alleys connectivity study. And even though they're two different projects, we wanted to, um, and we need to closely coordinate the community engagement aspect of that. And we just didn't know at that point if it was gonna be the same consultant or a different consultant and so we wanted to get to the, um, finish line with our staff level review of that. So, we will have a recommendation on a consultant selection on that project, um, to the council at the next meeting, um, with a, a contract for approval. Um, let's see. And the survey is now online on the Main Street.
Oh, cool.
Main Street planning project.
And, and where is that? Is that on the city's website or?
It's, it's not yet, but there was a separate website created by Allison Purnell just for the Main Street project, similar to the bypass, how they have their WordPress page. Um, so we've been posting all of our updates there.
Maybe if, um, this may have already been done, but maybe if you could email out a link to that, to the council members, then we could make sure it gets out there. There's already been, um, a couple of Facebook posts, um, I think from independent people talking about the planning process and some ideas coming up on there.
Okay, great. Uh, and then lastly, I, um, just wanted to briefly report on the annual, um, training and, and board meeting that Suzie and I attended last week for REMF, um, our self-insured pool. And we have quarterly board meetings, uh, we do an annual training and so the things that were covered, uh, safety program and in particular, the material safety data sheets that, um, starting July 1st, we have to have those, you know, everybody has to have them online and archived. Um, so there was some discussion about that and how to best go about that.
Yeah, it's a project.
Cyber loss coverage was a big topic, so, um, REMF has been engaging a consultant to, um, bring forward a cyber loss insurance policy.
What does that mean?
Well, we live in age of. We live in a cyber age.
Right.
And so, um, you know, when you get hacked, for example, um, and your privacy is. And so, you know, when you get hacked, for example, and your privacy is, that results in, you know, claims and litigation and whatnot. So, you wanna...
Economic losses, wow.
Yeah, we had an insurance hack last year, two years ago.
Right, with Anthem Loop Cross, right.
Of course, insurance would be right.
So, we'll be bringing more information forward as that becomes available. We had an update on the healthcare, our healthcare plan. We went from a fully insured plan to a self-insured plan effective July 1st. And so, we just got a progress report on that from the brokers. For the most part, it's going well, you know, there have been a few glitches along the way, but they've worked through them. And they're working to complete a policy and procedures manual for that self-insured plan. And I think the last thing we did on the, on the full day Thursday was we heard from Frank James, who was one of the founding REMF board members. And he was from Cloverdale. And he got together, did some networking with other Sonoma County, small to medium sized cities, and the City of Icaia, city manager at that time, which early seventies or early, I think it was early or mid seventies. REMF is actually the oldest JPA, risk JPA in California. So, it was kind of a novel idea at the time. They were going into uncharted territory, but they really set, established a good model for this. So, he was very entertaining and interesting and engaging. And then, I wanted to mention one more thing. On Friday at the board meeting, we went over, as we always do, our general liability claims and premiums, as well as a workers' comp program. And we are going to be having a slight increase in our general liability premiums. I think it was about ten, eleven percent. And workers' comp, we actually had a decrease in that. However, the REMF staff is recommending a $250,000 surcharge for the program, for the entire pool, because reserves have dipped. And the board instead decided to do a $500,000 surcharge. So, I think that what that means for us is an additional $5,000 to the city.
Okay. So, you're gonna save like an additional $200,000 to the city, which we can't, yeah, okay.
So, the board is just basically trying to be very responsible and stay ahead of the curve. So, all in all, it was a good meeting. It was not a bad location, St. Helena. And I understand that REMF didn't have any higher expenditure for that annual event than they do in any other city like when we hosted it, that the St. Helena staff called in some deals.
That's a good thing, because I was seeing on the news about one of these charities that's been investigated by the Justice Department for...
Having their meetings.
It's very disappointing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Thank you. Okay, Department of Recommendations, Administration, we have a report from the city clerk tonight, I'm sure. We're gonna get you up. Finance, ma'am?
Well, I'll just add on to what Adrian was saying, that between liability and workers' comp, I think the total increase is gonna be $5,000 for the year. There's not a huge impact between the two of them. The cyber policy also will cover if you accidentally email personal information to the wrong person, which is, you know, attacking all the time and clicking on the wrong person or somebody pops up and...
How do you insure against that? I don't understand.
You don't insure against it, but you insure for the whoever's...
The result of telling the wrong person or something?
If somebody brings a lawsuit against you.
Because if you sent my social security number and birthday and name to someone else.
Oh, okay.
It's not supposed to happen.
You're not talking about if, you know, one of these secret emails gets out?
No, I said health insurance or that type, related to that type of thing that you would have...
Breach of privacy.
Yeah.
It's not a Benghazi thing.
We don't have any.
And REMF is turning forty in June. That was the other thing that I thought was very interesting.
And they're fairly successful. I mean, like we said, they're, they're in the game and they're doing well.
I have a question, which, since I'm not on the Finance Committee, but you're probably starting to prepare budgets for this coming year. And I remember in the last couple of years, we've had some turnover that made it impossible. But the idea of being, of being able to do a two-year budget, and I don't know whether there's too many variables coming up for us or not, but now that we have a three-year contract with our employees, it would be nice to be able to budget a couple of years at once. And it'll obviously come back if you need to change things. But that whole budgeting process takes a lot of effort. And if we could do it, the main effort for two years instead of one, it's an idea I'd like to keep in the, in our minds.
You don't look forward to reading the budget every year?
I do, actually.
I thought you would.
But there will always be something that will come back to us.
I know Suzie's vetted that, that idea with, you know, within the Finance List Serve throughout the state and has got, received back some mixed, you know, mixed feedback. There's pros and cons to it. And so, we haven't really moved forward with it, but we have checked it out somewhat.
And I realize that, you know, with the bypass coming online, some of our revenues are gonna be hard to predict.
Right.
So, maybe this is the time to do it. But I love the idea of the efficiency of being able to go look two years ahead instead of only one year. Put that out there.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Human Resources, anything?
No.
And legal? Public Safety, Chief?
Somebody forgot their glasses.
Could've been anybody.
Thank you to Ron and Bruce who showed up. We did a going away luncheon for Brandy Gamble, our community service officer. She was with us almost ten years, just shy. And we'll be out looking for another community service officer. Brandy is leaving us to go to Highway Patrol. And so, in addition to the community service officer position that we'll be applying, we are also looking for dispatchers. So, kind of a plug out there for TV Land. If you wanna be a police dispatcher, we are hiring. And we'll be looking again for the community service officer position. You know, amongst the things that Brandy did is she coordinated our abandoned vehicle program, our parking enforcement, and also did our evidence room. So, in the interim, I have Scott Warnock, who's been an annuited before for us, to come in temporarily and work part-time to handle some evidence room issues. Those things pile up, whether you gotta CSO or not, so it'll continue, so that's all I've got.
You know, I was very impressed with, there was just a very nice, friendly vibe in the room. She seems to be well-liked by her coworkers.
Yeah, and I think before her, we had Colleen and, Colleen Welborn. And we thought we'd never get another Colleen, and we got Brandy, and Brandy made the job her own. And, you know, it's not like a big city where they maybe have three or four, thirty community service officers and lots of cops here. It's one person, and that one person can make or break that position. She had her fingers in a lot of different aspects of things over at the Police Department. And her effects were felt beyond, you know, at one point, we did a sting, a crosswalk sting, and she was our crosswalkee.
Nice.
So, we drug her in. And in addition to that, she also transported prisoners. So, she was doing a lot of things, so...
Well, Jerry, I was, I was unable to make it. I had thought I was gonna be able to, but something came up and I left her a note. But just so that we can say publicly that she's really gonna be missed. She was, always had a smile and I'm really gonna miss her being over there. And I certainly wish her all the best, but who knows, maybe she'll come back someday.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to add, I mean, well-liked is really an understatement. She was beloved because she was so good at her job and so professional, but she kept it real and fun. And she's leaving us to actually go to the academy to become a patrol officer. So, she's really taking the next step up in her career. And it's a huge loss for us, but we're very proud of her.
And I enjoyed your story about when you were transporting prisoner and you told him to wash his mouth because this is your daughter.
Yeah, but sometimes they're not very nice.
Yeah.
You have to shame them into being polite.
Thank you, Jerry. I guess Dusty, you're up.
Good evening, council members. Dusty Dooley, city planner. Good news, I've been discovered, okay? Many community members have come upstairs to say hi and talk about planning matters. Getting a number of emails and phone calls as well. Folks seem very happy to have somebody to talk to and to answer their planning questions. Councilmember Ornstein might say, a lot of people have been asking me to dance with them. So, that's been rewarding for me, so that's been good. Kind of just to repeat it last time, again, we have a number of current planning projects to process. We're in discussions about many other potential projects that might be coming in. And it's the plethora of projects, a wide variety. So, it's general plan amendments, rezones, subdivisions, use permits, variances, home occupation permits, boundary line adjustments, certificates of compliance, okay? So, which is great because that's justification for me having a job. So, no complaints there. Some big-ticket items, working on the housing element update, certainly integrating myself into the downtown planning processes, doing my best to take as many things off of our city manager's desk as I can. So, yeah, that's, that's, it's been, it's been a fun two weeks and looking forward to getting a lot of things done for the city, but...
Dusty, did you wanna say something about the REVITE Ed committee meeting that will be scheduled soon?
Yeah, if you, I think maybe you have your calendars with you. Didn't quite come on quick enough to, to have the meeting. I think maybe we hoped for, you know, a couple of weeks ago. So, the next meeting that we have scheduled is in April.
That sounds great. That sounds perfect.
Okay. You know, maybe was gonna talk about having a meeting earlier than that. I think there might be a couple of appointments that we need to look at for our community members. Definitely look forward to working with Councilmember Stransky and with you, Polly, for, on that committee. You know, I visioned probably the first meeting being a discussion about what, what types of projects or tasks that we wanna take on, making sure to prioritize that to a reasonable number, right? So, maybe, I envision probably maybe sending out an email with a couple of different dates and then going from there.
Okay, great.
And that would likely be probably maybe the beginning of March, after we've gotten these other appointments completed and we've got a full committee.
Sounds good.
There was an email that I am trying to call up, the details of it, that it had to do with what was allowed in a commercial zone and whether it would be a conditional use.
A conditional use permit or if it's permitted or not allowed.
Right. Yeah, what was the, what was the subject specifically? Because I'm not drawing it back up as of now.
So, you're wanting him to... She can't remember it, but do you?
Yeah, we've been getting a lot of, a lot of those types of questions about, you know, I have a piece of property. If it's vacant, I wanna do something with it. You know, we look up the zoning and then, you know, we talk to them about, you know, what the permitted uses are, what uses require discretionary permit, therefore, council approval. And sometimes, you know, you know, that doesn't really fit into the zoning and so, you need to look for these types of zone properties to get that going.
Well, my feedback at the time, what I can remember is that it seemed to me you raised some issues about having something allowed by Wright would potentially... Oh, it was a printing, it was the printing shop, that's what it was, about having custom printing be a permitted use instead of a conditional use.
Right, there's one gentleman that was talking about wanting to start a printing business in a zoning that didn't allow it. And so, was asking to potentially amend the zoning code to allow that type of business in a certain zoning. The last update I have on that project is the gentleman had asked verbally, requested to rescind the application that he'd been given. So, I'd asked for that in writing and had got it as of yet, but, yeah.
Well, my feedback was that a conditional use permit would be a better way to go than just having it allowed by Wright because of the potential for...
Same location.
Okay, that's it.
Exactly, you got it right.
I finally remembered what it was. Thank you.
And you know, one of the things, and I think Adrian struggles with this as well, is that now that you've been discovered, you may in fact be inundated by a lot of requests. And so, the tricky thing is how to filter those and make sure that you also have time to work on the prioritizing, which is, it's an evolving skill that I think we all try to work on, like how to make sure that you have times where the phone's not ringing. I've encouraged Adrian to just like be out of the, be not available like for an hour in the morning just to like try to get back to things.
And I'm completely comfortable working with, with our city manager and prioritizing my workload and going over strategies of how to kind of give myself the time needed to accomplish certain tasks, yeah.
I think it's a work in progress for all of us.
Well, that's good to hear. So, that sort of reinforces the decision to like hire you. Welcome aboard.
It's an exciting time for planning in the City of Willett's.
And now, we have Public Works and Engineering. Rod, you have something for us?
Just a couple of quick items. Public Works has been working consistently to keep the storm drains clear because we're having ongoing heavy rain situations. And we expect a pretty significant storm Friday, Saturday, I believe. Over the next five or six days, we could get five inches of rain, give or take. So, I just wanted to remind everybody that Sandbag Station is still set up over beside the Police Department there in the, in the parking lot. And we'll have the signs out on Friday so everybody knows how to get there. Other than that, we're starting the three million gallon tank repair on February 22nd. And we expect that to take five to six weeks. And that's all I have.
So, that involves setting up a separate storage, or no, you have to take it offline, right? Is that...
You have to take it offline.
Yeah, yeah.
We have to do some work between now and then to ensure that we have proper pressure up in the old hospital area and adequate pressure.
And the flushing system, is that, is that almost done?
Flushing's not almost done. It's kind of ongoing. We've had to take breaks from flushing for various reasons because of other, other priorities. But we expect that to go on for the next couple of months.
Were you able to use any of the water from the tank for the flushing?
We could, yeah, I think.
I hate to waste the water after four years of drought.
I know. But we couldn't ask, we couldn't ask for a better time to do it.
Yeah, we can't hold back everything that's coming.
Yeah, of course.
Down the watershed, so...
So, without the three million gallon tank, I guess you have, what, a half million gallon tank up at the watershed?
Million and a half.
Million and a half, and that's enough to supply the city with that three million?
That's why we're doing it during the low, the low demand time of the year. That's why it's scheduled for February last year. We expect to, the only concern, we're gonna sit down with Carl and we'll have to schedule with Carl and Jerry and talk about the potential fire, if there's a fire, if a major fire, what are we gonna do in that, in that situation? What kind of pressures are we gonna have at various hydrants? And just work out some logistics if we're faced with that situation.
So, you said, what, three to four weeks to repair the tank?
It'll take, we're expecting it to take five, up to five to six weeks, depending. It'll take them, they're saying three to four weeks to just to finish, to do the liner. So, then we'll have to disinfect, drain, disinfect and do the testing to make sure that we've disinfected the water in the tank enough to put it back into production, so...
Good. And we've been losing quite a bit of water out of that tank, haven't we? Or some?
I haven't heard that, so I'm not aware of...
I was speaking to someone who lives near there that said there's water running down the hill or something. Maybe not that much. the hill or something, maybe not that much.
Is it winter time, the water?
I don't recall. But anyway, so it's a good thing we're doing it.
So and one other thing I would stress to the public, whoever's listening, that when we get the heavy rainstorms, some of our ditches are going to overflow, and some of our streets, some of our gutters aren't going to contain all of the runoff, and we're going to have some localized flooding. And that's just par for the course around here, so.
Speaking of flooding, the floodplain maps and the whole FEMA process is moving ahead, and there's a lot of people affected very, you know, directly, who are now in the floodplain that weren't before and who face a certain financial hit because of having to get insurance. And I noticed that there were some possible grant, this is something to put on a future agenda, but if there's grants and things that the city could do to show FEMA that we have taken measures to reduce that flood hazard for some of those neighborhoods that are really hard-hit by the new maps, so that that could be revised, it would be really something to plan ahead for. And so I'd like to just put that, one more thing on our plate, but there's a way to do that because...
So John Sherman is our floodplain administrator, and, you know, we really haven't had any floodplain administration up until this point. And so he has really jumped into this, and he did talk with me briefly after that FEMA meeting about some grants that might be available. So he's looking into that for us, so I think we can have him come back and report on that.
It sounded like if we had taken some proactive steps to reduce hazards, to make sure that culverts were clear and bridges were clear and so forth, that maybe there would be more, especially if the city were taking the lead that way, because individual residents can't, you know, come up to FEMA and say, "Take my property off of your list." But the city could, so I'm really glad John is doing that. Thank you.
Anything else?
I don't know anything else.
Thank you, sir.
You sure enjoyed the sunshine today. Oh, man.
Okay, City Council Committee reports.
MCOC will meet Monday.
Okay, and LAFC?
LAFC will also meet Monday. Jerry Ward, who is here as the new chair, and boy, he's happened to do a lot of work. Right, there just happens to be a lot going on right now in that area.
What'd you get for volunteering?
Yeah, I was like, this is a volunteer position. Yeah.
Okay, MTA?
MTA will be meeting tomorrow morning at nine thirty at the Convention Center in Ukiah.
And ESMO will also be meeting tomorrow morning, right here. League of California Cities?
League of California Cities hasn't met, but we are still planning on hosting.
Yeah, yeah, I saw the invite today.
Yes, so you guys should all have gotten invites, and I responded like, obviously I'm going to be there because I'm our person, but they did mention that they are reaching out to McGuire and Jim Wood's office to encourage them to attend if they're around, so.
Yeah, I attended the last, was it like three years ago, four years, something like that?
Yeah, and it's really nice to show off. And now, if all goes well, it will be at the new hospital.
At the hospital, yeah.
Part of the day.
We've confirmed it.
It will, okay, it's confirmed. And so I think it'll be really a nice chance for us to show off some of the things that are going on.
Sounds good, Lauren.
When will the notices go out to the council?
It was emailed today, so it should be in your council box.
In your inbox.
Hopefully tomorrow.
It's there this morning, but thank you.
I think it just came out today.
When is it?
So don't worry.
When is it?
February twenty-sixth.
February what?
Twenty-sixth.
Which is a Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, and...
Thank you.
Yeah, there'll be a meeting, we'll send you a whole thing. There's a meeting during the day and then dinner at Adams if you're wanting to in the evening. But they will need RSVPs to...
What day of week is that?
Friday.
Friday.
Thank you.
The menu looks nice, though. Okay, Water, Waste Water did not meet. Revite Ed is apparently going to meet soon. Finance Committee, you don't want to talk to them.
February fourth.
I'm sorry?
February fourth is our next Finance Committee meeting.
Oh, really?
Great.
And you were going to share that information when?
I don't know. This week.
That's good. That could plan my month. Any other ad hoc committees? I guess we don't really have many of them at this point. Other committee reports?
EDFC has reached our minimum for the direct public offering, which means that the direct public offering will be going ahead and will be able to fund the Mendocino Wool and Fiber project partially. So we're at the minimum level, and we would like to get about eighty thousand more to be able to fully fund the wool and fiber mill that is proposed. So if people are interested in local investment, there is still that opportunity, and it's a much better place to put your money than sitting in a CD or a bank. And talk to me if you're interested. But I'm really glad that we met the minimum, so now we know that it will go forward. And when it's successful, we'll probably do another one. So EDFC will be meeting two weeks from now.
So what that means is that, what, two hundred fifty thousand, did you say? All of this money is allocated towards the one investment?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're taking it like in chunks, targeted investments?
People have invested, the minimum investment is a thousand, the most that any one individual has invested is twenty thousand. Quite a few organizations have also invested, including Willets Economic Localization and the Little Lake Grange, and some banks and some, you know, I think the...
But it's project-specific, is what you're saying.
Yeah, but this particular DPO is earmarked specifically for this project, which has been approved and vetted and has a good financial plan. So in the future, it may be a blind fund, which would allow EDFC to fund different projects, but this particular iteration is dedicated to that project.
Good, that is going to be my next question. All right, good. Council member reports and recommendations?
I have a couple. I was wondering if we're going to be doing any sort of goal-setting like we have in the past as a council prior to budget?
We're doing that every two years.
Okay.
And so we did it this last year.
Right.
And I think what we'll do in the budget process is revisit those goals.
Okay.
But as far as doing like the major...
Doing that process, yeah.
Right. We won't do that full process, you know, we won't bring consultants up and...
Well, what I was thinking is that now that we know how to do it, you know, in theory in future years, maybe we could do it, you know, we have the process down, we could do it on our own, save that expense and...
Susie, right.
Specifically, I'm just hoping that we can, yeah, if we're not going to do it, then we, the original plan was to have the goal-setting council-wide and then demonstrate through the budget how that's being reflected, and so that's the hard part to get.
Well, I think it would be helpful even before we do something like that is to kind of review what we have accomplished from, you know, the goals we have set, you know, we can do that periodically, I think.
Right, but remember, one of the things that was put forward was, you know, the council says, you know, we want this big wonderful goal, and staff gets to come back and say, "Well, actually, we can't, you know, do that all right now," or "We can do it over three years," or "We've already done this stuff," you know, like that's the part that I was really, that I wanted to do.
No, we haven't really, we struggle with trying to formalize sort of quarterly updates on those goals, and so I just feel like that's what we need to sort of focus on.
Yeah.
Review the goals, see what we're doing, you know, how we're doing with them, and there could be some that we can drop off the list and ask for new ones, but I was not envisioning that we would go through the, quite the full process.
Yeah, like the day workshop.
More like a, you know, review check and stuff like that.
Yeah. I also have a couple other ones, but I can leave? Go ahead.
Go ahead, you're on a roll, and then you get back to me.
Martha Barra mentioned the ABC, that Bruce went to an ABC thing?
It was a Builders Exchange event last Friday.
Okay, they've done an economic analysis in the past of Mendocino County, and I just didn't know if there was any sort of report given at that. I would love to see what it was. I don't know if that was the same kind of event that happened, but in the past, they've done that, and it's been really pretty interesting. I think that's it.
Is there any way that, to notify the homeowners, the property owners of downtown about this upcoming charrette?
Yeah.
How do we do that?
Well, we're having the next advisory meeting, group meeting on February seventeenth, and that's one of the items on the agenda, to nail down the details of the charrette, because we don't have all the details nailed down yet as far as where it's going to be and different, for example, this morning Dusty attended a meeting with Allison and with NCO to talk about the food for the kickoff event. So we're in the process of nailing, it's important, nailing down those details so that we're ready at the February seventeenth advisory group meeting to then launch this promotion campaign for the charrette. And we've already talked about a number of different ways that we need to promote it, not just, you know, for example, online or on Facebook, but in mailers, in the local media, on the radio, a variety of ways to promote that event.
Certified mail.
Certified mail was one of them.
Okay, because nothing has come out here, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Because I have people asking me, and I have no idea.
We should get you a card to have at the shop, so that when people come in and say, "When is it?" And you can say, "It's the..."
Can I complete it right below?
The twenty-second?
The claims are going to open?
Yeah. Oh, I don't even want to talk about that. I'm just going to keep my fingers crossed that that happens. I did have two other things. One is that I had a chance to meet with Sage San Jacomo in Ukiah, just to catch up on things. As the NCRA board person, they're very involved with the new courthouse, and so we commiserated a little bit about having courthouses that are then going to be vacant and how to go about utilizing it, because that's such a weird bureaucracy, dealing with the court specifically. But it was good to check in with, I mean, they're doing a lot of things, and one of the things that they're working on is figuring out what road projects of theirs are less of a priority, you know, as far as stiff money. You know, they're thinking, okay, you know, we had four, now maybe we're only going to be able to maybe get two funded, kind of thing. So they're going through an evaluation, unfortunately, on their transportation projects to try to be realistic about what will or will not get funded. It's really kind of unfortunate. And one of the things I think that will come up either at MCOC or in the future is, you're absolutely right, the, you know, the gas tax has been insufficient to fund transportation improvement projects for a long time, but I think it's reached this breaking point right now with the decline in gas sales prices. And so it mentions in that press release, like unless legislation goes into effect that will impact this. So I wonder how much of this is a, all the cities freak out because you're not there, and all the counties, because you're not going to get any more money for local projects unless you do this alternative funding structure for the roads, so...
Well, I get the sense that this year, something probably be done.
Yeah, it has to happen.
And it might just be a flat tax or something, because the whole, you know, people aren't driving as much, you're getting more efficiency, and they're, you know, and it's not just affecting the cities, it's affecting the state highways as well.
Absolutely.
So it's a major project problem. Okay, anything else from reports, recommendations? Let's see, we don't have any ordinances, good and welfare.
The Sip Some Soup thing is the social event of the season, which is February sixth. A lot of things are going on on February sixth, but the Sip Some Soup is one of the best ones, because it's all-you-can-eat Emendal bread, as well as supporting our local organizations and our daily bread. But also, the Art Center is having a members-only event, and there's a number of, there's a music concert, at least one, going on in town that supposedly is going to be quite good at the pub, so. Oh, and are you going to mention, yeah, are you going to mention the Rotary one?
Go for it.
The Ed Loudermilk Band is going to be playing on the thirtieth, which is Saturday?
Saturday, thirtieth.
Yes. They are supposedly hot stuff, and this is the primary currently, the primary fundraiser for the scholarships for the Rotary Club, because it used to be crab, and that is not happening this year. So we're really encouraging everyone to come out if you want to help support our youth via the scholarships that Rotary provides.
And actually, I think they were the ones from last year as well, and that was the first bluegrass concert that I was dragged to. And you know, it was really good. I really enjoyed it.
There's going to be many more to come.
I think it was third time out, and Ed Loudermilk was the bass player and a wonderful part of that band, so he's really good, yes.
And that's at the Grange on the thirtieth.
Yeah, so it was, yeah, it was a good event, so come see us.
I know I don't usually like bluegrass, but I love them.
Unfortunately, we have no closed session.
That is so nice, not having closed session.
And I guess we're going to adjourn. Thank you all.